Select Board Meeting to Order, today being Tuesday, June 25th, Town Hall at 6:00 P.M. This is a hybrid meeting, so pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts of 2023, this meeting will be conducted in person and via remote means in accordance with the applicable law. This means that members of the public body as well as members of the public may access this meeting in person or via virtual means. In-person attendance will be at the address listed at the bottom of this meeting agenda, and it is possible that all that all members of the public body may attend remotely, with in-person attendance consisting of members of the public. This meeting may be accessed via remotely via that same link. When required by law or allowed by the Chair, persons wishing to provide public comment or otherwise participate in the meeting may do so by in-person attendance or by accessing the meeting remotely as noted above. Additionally, the meeting will be broadcast live in real time via Verizon Channel 28 and Charter Channel 192, or via Westboro TV's online platforms at westbrotv.org and youtube.com/westbrotv. And I'd like to thank Westboro TV for providing that service. At this time, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we're ready for you, Chief.
Good evening, Todd Manberry, your Police Chief. First of all, I just want to say thank you for having us before you this evening for another promotional ceremony. It's an exciting time for us. I'd also like to just thank the Board, Town Manager, and her finance team for approving our FY-25 budget, which is allowing us to, for the first time in Department History, promote to the rank of Corporal, which is, I think, very exciting, and I hope many, many years from now, we'll look back at it as a positive and impactful decision that that we've made together. I've asked, in preparation of tonight's ceremony, I've asked Lieutenant Luce to prepare a short bio for each of the officers being promoted tonight, so I'm going to ask him to step forward and do that presentation, which will be followed by the clerks swearing their man. And I certainly want to thank her for spending her time to come with us tonight to do the swearing-in and complete all the paperwork. And then we'll have the pinning of the badges, some short photos, and we'll we'll get out of your way. So again, thank you very much for having us.
Thank you, Chief.
Lieutenant?
Good evening. I prepared for this. All right. We'll we'll start with Lieutenant Josh Croft. Lieutenant Croft has been a police officer for 15 years. He started in Nantucket as a summer special. He then went full-time for three years before coming to Westboro. Assigned as the Detective Sergeant for over two years, he's also a member of the Motor Unit, and he's also a field training officer. He has his Master's Degree in Criminal Justice from Pittsburgh State University. He lives in Boylston, he's married to his wife Sarah, and has two children, Ben, who is 10, and Will, who is seven. He's being pinned by his kids, Ben and Will. Sergeant Tom Tepper. Sergeant Tepper has been a police officer for nine years. He started his career with the Conway Police Department in New Hampshire before coming to Westboro in 2020. He's a member of the Crime Scene Unit and is also a field training officer. He lives, he's in the process of getting his Bachelor's Degree in Criminal Justice from Anna Maria College. He lives in Mendon with his wife Rebecca and their twin boys, Jax and Declan. He will be pinned by his wife Rebecca. Sergeant Caleb Paulsino. Sergeant Paulsino has been a police officer in Westboro for 12 years and a K-9 handler for the past five years. He's in the process of getting his Bachelor's Degree in Criminal Justice from Worcester State University. He lives in Sutton with his two sons, who will be pinning him. Corporal John Vazikas. Corporal Vazikas has been a police officer for seven years. John began his career at UMass Memorial Hospital, then went to Southboro Police Department before coming to Westboro PD. He's a member of the SEMLEC SWAT Team. He has his Bachelor's Degree in Criminal Justice from Northeastern University. He's married to Trish, who is also a police officer in Ashland. He will be getting pinned by his wife and two daughters. Finally, Corporal Trevor McNeil. Corporal McNeil started his career with the Barry Police Department before coming to Westboro Police Department in 2018. He's a member of the Community Engagement Team. Trevor has three children, Charlotte, Colton, and Cooper. His girlfriend Rebecca will be pinning him. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Have your offer written down if you ask me. I state your name.
I am John Tepper.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent on me.
All the duties incumbent on me.
As a police.
As a police.
For the town of Westboro.
For the town of Westboro.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
And agreeably.
And agreeably.
To the rules and regulations of the Constitution.
To the rules and regulations of the Constitution.
The bylaws of the Commonwealth.
The bylaws of the Commonwealth.
And the bylaws of this town.
And the bylaws of this town.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Could the family members doing the pinning please come forward? Could the family members doing the pinning please come forward?
It's awesome. Love all the little ones. They know. It's awesome.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Even though your dog's more popular than you, right?
I know. Where is he? Sorry. I know. Right, right.
Want them to picture themselves first?
Yeah. Alan, you're welcome to come back.
Alan Duck.
Sure. Once the families have their.
With you.
Get a star. You'll have to be outside.
My dad's.
Yeah.
I thought you were making.
Yep.
Good job.
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 Alan, you're welcome to come back.
We're doing interdepartmental transfers right here.
Reappointing to talk about stuff.
Get the popcorn out.
Congratulations.
Oh, no, it makes sense. I just got, let's see.
Actually, I need to call for a conference call.
What?
Oh, you're fine.
What?
Oh.
Well, I was right to be a little confused.
Absolutely not.
Well, I think we thought you were going to do the pledge.
I had my order of things. I wrote them all down here, one, two, three, four. I had them all ready. I was ready to go.
It's all good. All good.
You guys are just messing with every time.
Yeah.
Well, we tried to change it up.
I was all nervous.
I was nervous too if you hadn't run the meeting.
I know, right?
I know. He's got a good track record down.
I know. He's better than me.
Absolutely. Oh, look, we have people staying. Excellent.
Excellent, yes. So why don't we see, is there anyone here from open open forum? No? Seeing none, we'll move on. Item number three on our agenda, request to install beach, excuse me, bench at Chauncey Soccer Fields in the Meath family. So. Sure, come on up, please. Introduce yourself.
This is the first time I've done this.
That's all right. Just let us know your name and where you live.
My name is Corey Meath. I'm here with my mother, Annalise Meath. My father, my father passed away May 22nd from pancreatic cancer. Not worse than, I'm my worst enemy. And he loved, we're, my family has been residents of Westboro for 40, over 40 years. I and my brother graduated from Westboro High School, and he loved to go to Chauncey with his ducks hunt. And we would love to install a bench along Lake Chauncey. We have met with Brian Kane from Parks and Recs Department and kind of scoped out where would be a good spot by the other benches, who the installer is, where to buy the bench, so it would go in line with the other three benches that are there. Yeah.
Fantastic. Well, welcome. Sorry for your loss. It is a beautiful spot up there, and it's certainly a place where a bench, I think, would be widely used by the community, so I really appreciate your family being here tonight to talk to us about it. I'll just open it up to the world, see if there's any questions or comments.
No, just echo your thoughts, and thank you, and sorry for your loss, but thank you for considering this. It'll be something to be there forever, so thank you.
Thank you for allowing us to petition, and yeah.
Thank you, and hopefully, once it's installed, it will serve as a.
It will bring us joy.
Yeah, it will, it will, and and hopefully the dogs too, and you can.
The dogs, yes, my dog and and my father, my mother's dog, who love each other and love Lake Chauncey, so.
Excellent.
It will be beautiful.
Well, it will, with time, it will be a joyful memory, so.
Yes, absolutely.
But yes, someone want to make?
Quickly, yeah, they, yeah, thank you. Thank you very much for coming today. I am, I went to the Pickering site and read your father's obituary and saw the lovely photo that you had attached to that, and he seemed just like a tremendous gentleman.
He was an amazing, amazing man.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you very much.
Alan, did you have any comments or? All right, thank you. So I'll leave it open for a motion?
Nothing to add.
Oh, nothing to add, okay, sorry, Alan. I would move to accept the donation of bench and authorize its installation at the site proposed next to Chauncey Fields to be coordinated with the Department of Public Works.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
We have to roll call.
Oh, roll call, that's right. Roll call vote, Alan?
Edinburgh, yes.
Keough, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Marshall, yes.
And Welch, yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I look forward to seeing it up there. I walk up there all the time, so.
Yes, we will, we will welcome everybody, and we might be there with the dogs.
That's right.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Have a great night.
You too.
Nice to meet you.
All right, moving on to item four, request to approve Farmer's Win- Wintery Section 15F Permit for Broken Creek Vineyard. Sure, come on before us, just introduce yourself and.
Abigail Scaff, I'm the owner of Broken Creek Vineyard.
Welcome.
Fantastic.
Excellent, yep. It'll pick you up no matter, so you can just talk straight at us and it'll pick you up. You're good.
Didn't want to go long.
All good. So tell us about, just kind of use this as a little free advertising. What's this about and?
Well, we sell bottles and do wine tastings at other farmers markets in the state, and we were interested in joining yours. It's right next door. I'm actually like a mile from Westboro, so.
Fantastic. Well, glad to have you, and I look forward to seeing you at the event. I think it's going to be a great opportunity. Any questions by the board or comments?
I'm just, so it's wine? Just tell us a little bit about your business. I know you're located just over the line there in Shrewsbury.
We're a 41-acre farm. We have nine varieties of grapes growing. We make it all on property. And.
And you're in Shrewsbury.
Yeah, we're right in Shrewsbury, right at the Westboro line.
Excellent. I've heard great things about it.
Oh.
Books, book tastings and other events, and so.
We do tons of fundraisers, and we try to be part of the community.
Excellent. Excellent. I don't have any questions, I just, I'm excited, this is great.
Yeah, I think just in our package, just as I understand it through this, I don't know that we've done this before, is that it allows you as a farmer winery to petition us to to offer it there, but it's it's really for for off-premises consumption, so it's to, is that the correct piece here?
Yeah. You're allowed to offer samples?
Samples.
Yeah, we have one ounce cups.
Yeah.
And we allow three different wines.
Yep.
Just so folks understand what it is, yep.
Yep.
So perfect. That's exciting, thank you.
I just want to add, so because it's on town property, you should add to your motion that you're you're allowing this on public property, because the select board can can take that.
Got it.
Okay. Alan, did you have any questions or comments? No? Okay, thank you. All right.
No, I think this is a great idea, and look forward to them joining the farmer's market.
Okay. All right, I'll look for a motion.
Okay, I'll be happy to make that motion. I would move to issue a Section 15F liquor license to Scaff Vineyard and Winery, Inc., DBA Broken Creek Vineyard, for sale of their wine for off-premises consumption at a certified agricultural event at 1100 Union Street, Westboro, on Thursdays from 2:00 P.M. to 6:00 P.M. from June 27, 2024 to October 17, 2024. And this is on, the the motion includes authorization to sell, to have this action on town property.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Fantastic.
Seeing none, roll call vote, all those in favor, Alan?
Edinburgh, yes.
Keough, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Marshall, yes.
And Welch, yes. Congratulations. Welcome, and we look forward to seeing you down there.
See you Thursday.
All right.
You too.
Moving on to North Street Cemetery Update, Veterans Memorial Proposal and Public, by the Public Works Director, I don't see.
Yeah, we're we're 25 minutes ahead, so we're going to let him know.
Moving along here, what's?
Should we go to ARPA?
Go to ARPA, or you want a meeting notes? Kristi, what would you like to do?
Or architect bid?
We can do ARPA, that's fine.
Architect bid or whatever.
Yeah, can we?
The architect, yep.
That'd be good, that would be good before ARPA, yeah, to talk about the.
Yeah, and I just don't know if people are kind of, that's a pretty high interest item. I don't know if, can we kind of do the transfers? Is that okay?
Sure. And then we could go to appointments.
Yeah.
Okay, let's do the transfers.
Not that they're not all important, but.
So, so we have three requests for interdepartmental transfers. The first is the library is requesting $7,500. What's that? $7,500 from their salary and wages line to library expenses.
So I'll move to approve the interdepartmental transfer to move $7,500 from library salary and wages to library expenses as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Alan?
Edinburgh, yes.
Keough, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Marshall, yes.
And Welch, yes. Anybody want to do the next one?
Yep, sorry, so, yeah, we're just going to let Maureen know that that's all sets, she doesn't have to come. So the next one is a transfer from Youth and Family Services salary and wages of $80,000 to the electricity budget. You might remember that we previously did a transfer in the water budget related to electricity. As the Board knows, we negotiated a new contract that went into place in FY-24, and so, and so we're sort of working through that. We always have an electricity transfer. It's not usually this much, and so this will likely result in us having to adjust the budget for fiscal '25 at the Fall Town Meeting. And so we have the net metering credits, and that was a process that needed to be worked through in the Finance Department, and that's why it's coming to us at this time.
Kristi, what, do you, what do you attribute the need for? Is it the contract?
Is it? I think it's, the the contract actually, I think, was favorable. It's just the application of the contract to our use. It's just, I think, the use was higher than we had anticipated, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Go ahead, Ian.
I'll move to approve the interdepartmental transfer to move $80,000 from Youth and Family Services salary and wages to the electricity budget as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, all those in favor, Alan?
Edinburgh, yes.
Keough, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Marshall, yes.
And Welch, yes. Any other questions? Go ahead, Ian.
I'll move to approve the interdepartmental transfer to move $80,000 from Youth and Family Services salary and wages to the electricity budget as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Oh, roll call, that's right. Roll call vote, Alan?
Edinburgh, yes.
Keough, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Marshall, yes.
And Welch, yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I look forward to seeing it up there. I walk up there all the time, so.
We will welcome everybody and we might be there with the dogs.
That'll be great.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
You too.
Nice to meet you.
All right, moving on to item four, request to approve farmer's win- wintery section fifteen F permit for Broken Creek Vineyard. Sure, come on before us, just introduce yourself and-
Abigail Scaff, I'm the owner of Broken Creek Vineyard.
Welcome.
Fantastic.
Excellent, yep. It'll pick you up no matter, so you can just talk straight at us and it'll pick you up. You're good.
All good. So tell us about, just kind of use this as a little free advertising. What's this about and?
Um, well, we sell bottles and do wine tastings at other farmers markets in the state. And we were interested in joining yours. It's right next door. I'm actually like a mile from Westboro, so.
Fantastic. Well, glad to have you and I look forward to seeing you at the event. I think it's gonna be a great opportunity. Any questions by the board or comments?
I'm just, so it's wine? Just tell us a little bit about your business. I know you're located just over the line there in Shrewsbury.
We're a forty-one acre farm. We have nine varieties of grapes growing. We make it all on property.
And you're in Shrewsbury?
Yeah, we're right in Shrewsbury, right at the Westboro line.
I've heard great things about it, books, book tastings and other events and so.
We do tons of fundraisers and we try to be part of the community.
Excellent, excellent. I don't have any questions. I just, I'm excited. This is great.
Yeah, I think just in our package, just as I understand it through this, I don't know that we've done this before, is that it allows you as a farmer winery to petition us to offer it there, but it's really for for off-premises consumption. So it's to, is that the correct piece here?
You're allowed to offer samples?
Yeah, we have one ounce cups and then we allow three different wines.
Yep.
Just so folks understand what it is, yep. So, perfect. That's exciting. Thank you.
I just want to add, so because it's on town property, you should add to your motion that you're allowing this on public property because the select board can take that.
Got it.
Alan, did you have any questions or comments? No? Okay, thank you. All right.
No, I think this is a great idea and look forward to them joining the farmers market.
All right, I'll look for a motion.
Okay, I'll be happy to make that motion. I would move to issue a section fifteen F liquor license to Scaff Vineyard and Winery, Inc., DBA Broken Creek Vineyard, for sale of their wine for off-premises consumption at a certified agricultural event at eleven hundred Union Street, Westboro, on Thursdays from two PM to six PM from June twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four to October seventeen, twenty twenty-four. And this is on, the motion includes authorization to sell, to have this action on town property.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. All those in favor? Alan?
Edinburgh, yes.
Keough, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Marshall, yes.
And Welch, yes. Congratulations. Welcome and we look forward to seeing you down there.
See you Thursday. You too.
Moving on to North Street Cemetery update, Veterans Memorial proposal and public, by the Public Works Director, I don't see-
Yeah, we're twenty-five minutes ahead, so we're gonna let him know.
Moving along here, what's?
Should we go to ARPA?
Go to ARPA or you want a meeting notes? Kristi, what would you like to do?
Or architect bid?
We can do ARPA, that's fine.
Architect bid or whatever?
The architect, yep.
That'd be good, that would be good before ARPA, yeah, to talk about the bid first.
Yeah, and I just don't know if people are kind of, that's a pretty high interest item. I don't know, can we kind of do the transfers? Is that okay?
Sure. And then we could go to appointments.
Yeah.
Okay, let's do the transfers.
Not that they're not all important, but.
So, so we have three requests for interdepartmental transfers. The first is the library is requesting seventy-five hundred. Seventy-five hundred dollars from their salary and wages line to library expenses.
So I'll move to approve the interdepartmental transfer to move seventy-five hundred dollars from library salary and wages to library expenses as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Alan?
Edinburgh, yes.
Keough, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Marshall, yes.
And Welch, yes. Anybody want to do the next one?
Yep, sorry, so, yeah, we're just gonna let Maureen know that that's all sets, she doesn't have to come. So the next one is a transfer from Youth and Family Services salary and wages of eighty thousand dollars to the electricity budget. You might remember that we previously did a transfer in the water budget related to electricity. As the board knows, we negotiated a new contract that went into place in FY twenty-four. And so, and so we're sort of working through that. We always have an electricity transfer. It's not usually this much, and so this will likely result in us having to adjust the budget for fiscal twenty-five at the Fall Town Meeting. And so we have the net metering credits and that was a process that needed to be worked through in the Finance Department and that's why it's coming to us at this time.
Kristi, what do you, what do you attribute the need for? Is it the contract? Is it?
I think it's, the contract actually, I think, was favorable. It's just the application of the contract to our use. It's just, I think, the use was higher than we had anticipated, so.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Ian.
I'll move to approve the interdepartmental transfer to move eighty thousand dollars from Youth and Family Services salary and wages to the electricity budget as presented.
Second. Any further discussion?
I would just note for the public, since it's a sizable amount, the reason why it's being moved from salary and wages as we know is that we're, all those, all of the services are being provided other than the single employee under Youth and Family Services is in the salary and everything else falls under expenses now.
For fiscal twenty-five, for fiscal twenty-four, we just, this is for vacant.
They have vacant positions, yep.
Thank you, yes. So just in case folks are like, what's going on and why, why aren't we spending that money? Because that position was open. Thank you, yep.
Okay, roll call vote, Alan?
Edinburgh, yes.
Keough, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Marshall, yes.
And Welch, yes. And the last one, please?
So the last one is forty-five thousand dollars from the police salary and wages to fire department expenses. And this is attributable to, I think, additional maintenance on the building, but also when we are, our contract to collect fees related to ambulance receipts. The more fees we're collecting, the more we have to pay, and so there was a significant increase in, in collecting for ambulance receipts, which means our revenues go up, but it can't go, it doesn't go straight into the budget.
Meaning the service that we're using to collect those fees goes up because of volume.
Right, exactly.
Yep, I was like, why are we paying for expenses for?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we contract with a service to collect the fees.
So it's good and bad news.
Right.
Yeah, it is. I remember Chief always telling us, telling us.
So I'll move to approve the interdepartmental transfer to move forty-five thousand dollars from police salary and wages to fire department expenses as presented.
Second. Any further discussion?
Seeing none, Alan?
Edinburgh, yes.
Keough, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Marshall, yes.
And Welch, yes. Thank you, Kristi.
And it looks like Chris is here, if you wanna flip back.
So why don't we jump back up to items, item five, North Street Cemetery update. Welcome, Chris.
Sorry, we're going too fast tonight.
Good. Chris Pant, Director of Public Works, gonna provide a very brief update on what's going on with our new cemetery. So two thousand seventeen, nineteen cemetery was constructed off of Nurse Street. We have a few more things to wrap up to open the cemetery, but we expect either later this year or the beginning of twenty twenty-five we'll open it up, meaning make lots available for sale. I'm just gonna show a few pictures and show a couple of big things that we're working on to, to wrap up the work that needs to be done there. So I'll start at the top left, a little blurry, but this is Westboro outlined. This is where we're talking about, so this is off of Route thirty, kind of western edge of town. This is an aerial, this is the existing cemetery, you know, viewed from above. And this was the conceptual drawing of the cemetery, so Nurse Street here, entrance here. We recently did some drainage work here. It was done earlier this spring. I'm gonna talk in a minute about the Veterans Memorial, which will go here. We have some work to do at the entrance to clean it up and make it look like a cemetery and then some plantings and signage that needs to be wrapped up. So, working with members of the Trustees Memorial-
Trustees of Soldiers' Memorials.
It's a mouthful.
Mark spoke for it. So, over several months working with them, they, they helped us, actually, they did come up with a design with a firm. This is a rendering of that design, so really just wanted to let you know what was at least recommended by them. So this picture here reflects, you know, this location, which again, Nurse Street here, you walk up straight into the cemetery and there's this pad here, already developed, so the pad, everything here on the ground is, is there. These benches and this memorial and this flagpole would be things that we would need to install. So this design was recently decided upon. What we're doing now is getting the cost estimate, and we have some ballparks, but we need to refine that cost estimate and then figure out the process for ordering, installation, all that sort of thing. So that's where we are. This is just kind of a close-up, so these seals are the six seals for the six different services. You can see kind of a scale, it's about ten feet tall. So similar, similar look as the memorial at Pine Grove in terms of kind of the polished black granite. So we're, I think we're pretty excited about it and happy with it, so planning to move forward with it and get that, get that done. So those are the pictures. And then at the entrance, like I said, we'll, not as far along, but we're pretty close to getting a contract to install some, some columns and a nice entry, which was all part of the original design, and then, and then wrap things up.
Thank you, Chris. I appreciate all your work on this and the design. I like it a lot. I will just mention, I'd love to see if there was any comments, Mark, invite you guys up to share any of your thoughts or comments that you'd like to share from the trustees. I know that you all have worked on this. So come on up and introduce yourself and. Yeah, Dick, you can come on up.
Dick, do you want to?
Yeah, come on.
Yeah, you've done work on this as well. Plus, we love your shirt.
Hi, my name is Mark Brady from thirty-eight Lackey Street in town. I am a member of the Trustees of Soldiers' Memorials. It consists of members John Gallinari, Jeff Spofford, Brian Corcoran, Lee Strout, and myself. I'm serving as the chairperson for the committee right now. I just want to say that this town really treats its veterans especially well. And, and it's a two-way street. The veterans really appreciate everything that the town does for them. And this, this design was a culmination of really a cooperative effort with the DPW. They were very open to, you know, listening to. Our, our mission is to, you know, we don't get to design too many new monuments, but we do maintain, clean, paint poles, do other things to honor. This town is rich in monuments. We have thirteen now, soon to go to fourteen. We have the beautiful Forbes Plaza Square. And again, the collaborative effort of other groups in town like the Garden Club the DPW especially, in, in making sure these cemeteries are beautiful and present the veterans' rights and purposes for what they want to do as they, you know, look to be honored and served and for their service in, in these cemeteries. So this monument is a beautiful monument that, you know, has a separate flagpole because the flag is for everybody, not just veterans, but, and we, you know, we felt that was important to honor, you know, have a cemetery open to everybody that honored all Americans that coming in there. But the cemetery, the monument itself is just stunning and it is gonna be one of the crown jewel monuments in the area. And we already have some beautiful monuments in this area and a rich history of them. So I really want to thank the DPW for their cooperation and collaboration and working with us and keeping the doors open to new ideas and, and coming through with this beautiful monument. It's, it's gonna be stunning. I'm so proud of it. And I also want to thank my predecessor, Dick Passler, for past committees of the Soldiers' and Monuments, Trustees of Monuments Committees that pushed us along over the years and brought it to fruition this year. You know, Dick had a big part of it in the past, so I'm glad he's here tonight because this is one of his, you know, one of his babies. This is really important to him, so thank you very much for this and thank you very much, Chris. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mark and Mr. Passler. Did you want to, sure, make a few comments?
I am Dick Passler from Tendlinda Street in Westboro. My talk starts about two and a half years ago when TJ Voudas came to our committee, committee that I was on. I am no longer on the Trustees of Soldiers' Memorals Committee. But he came to us and said that we should come up with some ideas for a veterans' memorial, for the new cemetery. Well, I mean, this is kind of an overwhelming thought. And I, I proposed that we go to the high school graphic arts department and see if they could come up with some designs. And we gave them the, the things we wanted in the memorial. That was all six branches of the service represented. And the, the footing was already in place, which was a four by four base. So that, that's, that's what they had to go on. And the graphic arts department came up with three designs and one is actually almost identical to the final design. The only, the only thing we added was the topper, which is a half dome with, with an eagle. But kudos to our graphics depo- arts department, which really came up with this design, which held together throughout the whole process of sending this, their designs to a commercial design outfit. And they came back with a few different designs. One of them was, was, of course, this design here, which was almost identical. So I just want to let people know what, and I, and I've talked with Brian Callhead and I said, they should go back to his department and show him this design, which I forwarded a copy and, and tell the students that they're gonna have something that they can go back to in this town and say, I had a part in designing this. So I just, kudos to our high school fine arts, graphic arts departments.
Thank you, Mr. Passler. I would just say, great job by all. It's great to hear about the collaboration along with the DPW with Arthur High School. I didn't, I didn't know that part of it. And Mark and Dick, thank you very much for, for talking to us tonight and sharing with us what's going on and same with Chris. Do you have any other?
Just one more comment. So something, I guess, just to put on radar, I'm not sure of the process will follow, but we've been calling it Nurse Street Cemetery only because it's on Nurse Street and there's a, there has been a sign out there. It was totally just, you know, handmade just to alert deliverers to, or, you know, material deliverers to, to the site. That's either down now or coming down shortly, but at some point, we'll need to decide, is it just Westboro Cemetery or some other name? I'm not making that determination, so however the town wants to pursue that, we'll, we'll, you know, put the sign up or whatever the requirement is. I don't think that's something that has to be done immediately, but I think at some point we'll wanna, we'll wanna do that.
Certainly in advance of starting to sell legally, you'd have to have a named place before we start selling plots. Yep.
And when do we anticipate that to begin? Do you have any idea when the town will start?
Our, our goal is the end of the year, that we want to be done with at least, maybe the name's not decided, but at least everything else is done, and then, then we can decide when it's appropriate to open the cemetery.
Okay. Kristi, I'm not sure if there's an answer to this yet or if it's something you have to go back and look into, but what is the process? Is there?
We have just, the board has ultimately named things, like we named, we named the fields after Earl Story. This board also chose the name of the Solomon Carter Fuller. So that's-
Veteran's Freedom Park too, but that was done.
That was right before I got here, yeah, okay.
But same thing.
So this board has always, has always made that ultimate decision. Sometimes we just get suggestions from the public or we solicit from staff. So it's, I think we'll just think about how we're gonna approach this. We might want to go out to some of the committees.
Sounds like we've got some time to figure that out, so.
Just putting it out there.
Yeah, that's right.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, we may need some time. So any other questions or comments?
Just, first of all, I want to thank the Trustees of Soldiers' Memorial. As they know, we have, there's a member of that committee that comes from this board, it's the chair. So I love the collaboration that's happened over the years to have that relationship, for this board to be an extension of your committee. And it's, it's amazing when you think about, when I was chair, which is like an eternity ago, we were just starting to have those conversations, right, Dick? And, and then, you know, Ian, I think you were next, or Alan was, and, and here we are today. So things do take time, so I appreciate all the work that goes into it. I love the collaboration with the schools and everything that's been said. And I, and appreciate, Mark, the, you know, the recognition of the honor that we give to our veterans, both living and those who have passed. From a business perspective, so to speak, Chris, I would imagine, so as I recall, the budget from the, for Trustees of Soldiers' Memorals annually is around twenty-five hundred dollars. So this is certainly gonna cost more than that, so this would be an article, I presume, at Fall Town Meeting?
No, I think this is already in the, it's already in budget for the cemetery.
Okay, sorry.
It's come out of the barrow. It was, it was approved several years ago, yeah.
Okay, but.
This was part of the overall bar for the cemetery construction.
Oh, okay, okay, got it. Okay, so it's a counter-
Same with the entrance way and all that. Those are all pieces that were part of the bar.
You don't need to tell me the article, that's where it was going. Okay, great. And then just for, put in reference, when you're driving in, so to the right, there's like a, a little cul-de-sac loop around. That's just another area, that's not a designated area? Because originally I thought that's where the veterans' memorial was gonna go.
I, I believe that's where it was originally intended to go and there were some things that happened that caused it to be changed to where it is now. And so right now, there's not anything specific that's planned for there, but I, I think there were discussions. This is not funded, but maybe the town at some point in the future might want to install just a memorial, not to veterans, but just to, I don't know, just the town.
Residents.
Some sort of town memorial. I, I'm not sure the details, but there's options. I don't think there's anything we need to do immediately and we don't have any plans to do anything, but that location exists for something to be developed in the future.
Okay, and I'm not gonna get the right technical term as it relates to cemeteries. Are all of the available locations, will they all be plots in the ground? Or some cemeteries have walls where you, like, remains can, like, cremated remains?
They're all in the ground, but some are graves and some are cremation, can be cremations, just like Pine Grove.
Okay, all right, thank you.
No, I just want to say thank you all very much. It was an honor, you know, my time on the Trustees of Soldiers' Memorial. So thank you very much. And Chris, thank you for all your work. This looks tremendous. Thank you very much.
Just gonna say ditto.
Alan, did you have any comments, questions?
No, just reiterate the gratitude to the committee and to the DPW and Chris and his team for this great work.
All right, fantastic. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great rest of your night.
Look forward to getting it open too. It's a long time coming, so.
Okay, moving on to item six, request to award architect contract for community center.
Did you want to still hold off on that since we're twenty minutes early or was that the one you were?
Oh, that's right.
I mean, we're, we're closer. I just, I know that there's high interest. I don't know if there's anything else we can, like, quickly put in there.
Can we do, let's do appointments.
So you have an updated appointment list on the desk from Cela. So these are, so the list on the, on your desk is, is the reappointments.
So I'd move to appoint Michael Beretti and Ken Gagnon to the Veterans Advisory Board for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, so these are new appointments.
Can, okay.
Sorry.
Any discussion?
Thanks for volunteering, as always.
Yes, I was gonna say at the end for everyone, but we can do it one at a time. Yes, thank you very much for volunteering and offering your time. Alan?
Edinburgh, yes.
Keough, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Marshall, yes.
And Welch, yes.
And I would move to appoint Rebecca Dolan to Sustainable Westboro for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Go ahead, Alan.
Edinburgh, yes.
Keough, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Marshall, yes.
And Welch, yes.
Okay, and I will move to approve the reappointments as presented.
I do think we have to read them.
Yeah.
Yep, I'm sorry, I'm just getting a correction on one.
You're good at the long ones.
Yep. So Hank Rouch, Affordable Housing Trust, the term length of two years, expiring six thirty, twenty twenty-six. Joe McDonough, Board of Assessors, three-year term, six thirty, twenty twenty-seven expiration. Peter Bowman, Sandra Pondwarden for one year. Peter Bowman, Sandra Pond-Warden, for one year, term expiration of June 30th, 2025. Daniel Berger, Open Space Preservation Committee, a term of one year, term expiration 6/30/2025. Alicia O'Brien, Veterans Advisory Board, Maurice Hires or Hiers, Veteran Advisory Board, I apologize for that. James Tepper, Veterans Advisory Board, Paul Horrigan, Veterans Advisory Board, Andy Turok, Veterans Advisory Board, and Brad Huff to the Veterans Advisory Board. Those are all one-year terms, expiring 6/30/2025. Scott Raely to the Economic Development Committee, three-year term, 6/30/2027 expiration. Madison Smith to the Spirit Committee, one-year term, expiring 6/30/2025. Kate Storm to the Affordable Housing Trust, two years, term expiring June 30th, 2026. Dan Maservi, Zoning Board of Appeals, three-year term, expiring June 30th, 2027. Lydia Goldblatt to the Spirit Committee, one-year term, term expires 6/30, June 30th, 2025. And then Donald Sealy Jr. to the Open Space Preservation Committee, one-year term, term expiring June 30th, 2025.
Second.
I just want to make sure, you said three years for Scott?
Yes.
Okay, not one.
Three years, and it's 6/30/2027.
Yep. Okay.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Alan vote?
Edinburgh, yes.
Kyo, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Marshall, yes.
And Welchess. And I'll just echo what were comments earlier. Thank you all, those volunteers, for these various positions, these various different boards and committees do a tremendous amount, tremendous amount of important work for the town. So it's wonderful to see so many people want to be active with the community. Thank you.
Go to the minutes?
Let's go to the minutes.
So I would move to approve the meeting minutes of June 11, 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, take a vote. Alan?
Edinburgh, yes.
Kyo, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Marshall, yes.
And Welchess. Thank you, Cela, for putting the poll in the others' minutes. And getting closer now.
I think we're good.
I think we're ready.
All right. We'll move on to item number six now. Again, the request to award the architect contract for the community center. I'll open it up to Kristi.
So we received bids for the architects on June 18th. And the working group, so that is myself, Kim Foster, Ian as the board's representative, Tyler Wiseman from the Municipal Building Committee, as well as our Recreation Director, Jen Kirkland, and Senior Center Director, Alma Demont, reviewed all of the bids that we received. And then we interviewed the top three today. And so we are making a recommendation to award the contract to BH Plus A, which is an architectural firm out of Boston. I think that the group felt that this would be a really great partnership. They have a lot of experience in doing similar projects. So I don't know, Ian, if you want to add anything?
No, I think the overwhelming piece with them is, and one of the criterias for evaluation was experience with community centers. And they have extensive, as Kristi said, experience with multiple community centers, as well as rec. centers and senior centers separately, but definitely their experience there and with presenting designs of what they've done before, just really kind of tipped it in their favor. I think they'll be a good partner. As we all know, a big piece to this is the community engagement. So a big part of our interviews today for the three finalists was on the community engagement side, and that will be a big piece of initial meetings going forward, because that's really the kickoff of this, and folks should expect it, because of the tight timeframe to hit our October Town Meeting goal, that we will be starting in the month of July with those community engagements, because that really is the kickoff. So more to come very soon. We'll communicate those through various means and have various forums for folks to attend and offer their comments. So stay tuned for that. But I think, from a committee unanimously voted to present this to the Select Board of the approval of BHNA as the architect for the center. This is really for phase one of this piece.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, I'm just, so first of all, thank you to the work group for their work. And in a tight timeframe, I'm also excited that we received four bids. So that's great that you had a comparison. And again, appreciate the work there. I am curious, just if you know them, just a handful of community centers that BH Plus A has worked on, do you have just some reference points would be helpful? I think the public would be interested.
Yes. Yes, I'm here.
So Sudbury, Fairbank Community Center, Randolph Intergenerational Community Center, Situate Senior and Recreation Center, Pembroke Community Center. The list is very long.
Okay.
Andover Senior Center. So several.
Thank you. And again, just...
Newton is one they showed us today, and they have a great little acronym called NUCAL, but it's the Newton Center for Active Living.
Oh, Newton, okay.
But yeah, I mean, it's, you go through the list, again, it's...
So again, it's B-H-plus-A-F?
B-H-plus-A.
If the public is interested in looking at it. Yep, great. Thank you. That was my only question.
Yeah, and there's, we didn't hit it, there's probably 15 others, if not more on the list.
Sure, yeah, no, that's fine. Just a handful.
Extensive, and...
And just to, for clarity, this will work through the municipal building?
No, not initially.
Not initially.
So I think, so when we talk to the Municipal Building Committee, their role is really the construction piece. And since this original schematic design is really figuring out the building program and the schematic design, it will actually work, it'll work through that group I just mentioned.
Okay.
That being said, we do intend to update the Municipal Building Committee at all of their meetings. So I attend all of those meetings. Ian and Tyler sit on that. And then, you know, one of the things that we have talked about often is the need for project website. So we'll be working on that as well, so that people can update along the way.
This will come through us with regular updates for our Select Board, because it will come through as well for an article for Town Meeting, but we'll be the key parts of this one.
Thanks for the clarification.
Yep.
On process, thank you.
Makes sense.
Great.
Sean?
Yeah, no, thank you, thank you for this. And yeah, in looking at, I think, what they've done, their presentation in other communities, it is quite impressive. It would remind folks that, you know, certainly it's the first floor of the building where the work is needed, if you've seen it. But they will be helping us evaluate the building for its entirety, you know? And so we're looking forward to getting to hear everybody's feedback. And, you know, again, these folks are the architects, but we're actually going to tell them what we want.
That's right.
So looking forward to doing that.
Alan?
Thank you all.
Oh, sorry. Alan?
No, I'm excited to move forward, and I just want to encourage people, you know, it is summer, maybe folks aren't paying this close attention to town happenings. So really paying attention to those public engagement sessions for folks who want to provide input, so they have that opportunity.
And we did include, within the RFQ, the need for some way for folks to participate, either through a survey or remotely, so that if people are away, they can still offer feedback, so.
Oh, and I guess one other thing, right? So now, there is a negoti, we've, we've made this, or I guess we're about to make the vote.
Exactly. Then we can do it.
But then, you need to negotiate with them. So it's really, as soon as that happens, then we can start putting dates out there, right?
Yeah, as soon as we execute the contract. Yep.
So there is just one more step, folks, before we get to the end, okay? We're getting, we're getting very close.
We have to have a contract next, so.
Yep.
But we can't have a contract until we, as a board, vote. So it's okay, I'll make a motion. So I'll move to award the bid for the architect for the Multi-Generation Community Center to BHNA, which stands for Bergman, Hendry &amp; Architep, Inc., BHNA, and to authorize the town manager to negotiate and execute a contract.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call. Alan?
Edinburgh, yes.
Kyo, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Marshall, yes.
And Welchess.
Exciting.
Yes, very exciting. Thank you, Ian and the team, for working on this. It's great work. I enjoyed reading the proposals. And I just had one quick question. Will the, apologies if you already said this, will the proposal, will that, is that something that people can see? A lot of good information in there, just different things, styles of things they've done and...
Yeah.
And whatnot, okay.
It'll be part of that website, probably, right, at some point?
Yeah.
Okay. Terrific. All right, moving on to item seven, request to release unused American Rescue Plan ARPA funds and to award funds to Community Center Project. Kristi?
Thanks. So as you know, we, several years, a few years ago, we had a request from the former Director of Youth and Family Services for two projects related to those services. So one was a case management project for, using ARPA funds for that. And then the other was more of a program. She left the position before either of those were able to get up and running. And then with the discussion around sort of changing the service delivery model, neither, no funds have been spent for either of those projects. And we actually, the case management piece will actually be taken up by Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services. So the request is to release the funds of those two projects, which is, which is about $200,000. I'm sorry, which is actually over $200,000. And then to award $45,000 to the, to fund the owner's project manager contract for the community center. So that would leave a available balance that we would go back out to department heads and ask them for any projects, also making sure that we're looking at, you know, other projects that are in the works, to make sure that if there's an estimated overage, that we would be able to use ARPA funds for that. We have talked to Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services about the opportunity to also apply for some of this money, so that some of that, those project funds could actually be used in this space. So they're thinking about that. They'll be talking with the Youth Commission about opportunities for that. But in the meantime, we're asking that the board award $45,000, again, for the owner's project manager contract for the community center. When we had originally gone to Town Meeting, we had two articles for the community center. So one was to purchase it for the 8.8 million, the other was to cover all sorts of carrying costs as well as associated costs. So it was utilities, it was due diligence efforts, but it was also, within it, was $85,000 that we had identified for the architect. As you all know, sort of following those, that meeting and having additional discussions, it felt most prudent to bring an OPM on immediately, as opposed to waiting until after this public engagement piece. And so we did, you awarded, and I negotiated the contract with our current OPM, which is CHA. We did sign that contract because we had that money available. But now we're recommending that this actually be covered through ARPA, so that that money that was originally designated for the architect can be used for that contract. So just for the public, and as you know, we have to get the price proposal at this point from the architect, so. And we don't have that yet. And this has gone through the process. So it was, it was recommended by the finance team. We talked about it with the Advisory Finance Committee. I think everyone felt like using ARPA funds for the community center was a very good use of those funds. And I believe, if I remember, it was voted unanimously by the AFC to recommend it to you.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
So Kristi, of the $200,000 that was allocated at Town Meeting for the maintain the building, closing, due diligence, is there anything, and $85,000 was supposed to be part of that or is part of that for the architect? Do you know what the current balance is of that $200,000?
I don't have the current balance.
Okay.
I believe there's more than that $85,000.
Okay, okay. And, but again, we're, 85 is a placeholder.
Yep.
And, okay.
So the way that the article was approved, if there is additional funds, we could use that towards the architect. I don't know if that's what you were asking, but yeah.
Yeah, just what else comes to you?
Yep.
Okay.
And just quick, so a reminder, for, with ARPA funds, everything needs to be allocated by end of this year.
Correct. Yeah, and that means beyond just the board voting, it has to be under contract.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'll move to release the funds previously allocated Youth and Family Services to the ARPA available balance and further to allocate $45,000 for the purpose of funding the owner's project manager contract for the Community Center Project.
Second.
Okay, Alan?
Edinburgh, yes.
Kyo, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Marshall, yes.
And Welchess. Thank you, Kristi.
Thanks.
Moving on to item eight, extension of contract for solid waste disposal with Eel Harvey and Sons.
So as you're aware, we've been working with Harvey's to negotiate a successor contract, so the one that's going to expire at the end of this month. And so we did provide it to them several weeks ago, and they've, they've sent it on to the legal department. So we're just waiting to hear back, but we have had, you know, some discussions with the representatives that we work with. And ultimately, we've decided that we need, we would like to execute an extension of this current contract in order to give us more time to finalize that successor contract. So that allows us, obviously, to maintain our program and to continue, and still move forward with pay as you throw, as you saw is listed in the extension. But it also allows Harvey's to maintain their permit, which they're required to have in order to operate in this town, under Article 22 of the town's bylaws. So we did, we did develop this extension, which would extend current terms through August 5th, and they did sign it today. So we have their signature on it, and we would just need the board to approve execution on our end.
Questions, comments?
If I may, just as a comment, working closely with Kristi and our Board of Health Director, DPW Director, and Dr. Erlich from the Board of Health. So, you know, this has been a pretty laborious process to get to this point. It would have been great to have a contract in place, multi-year contract. That wasn't, for lack of a lot of trying and pushing on the part of the town through our town manager, so I want to thank her for that work. And Jen Sullivan, too, is our Board of Health Director. I think the extension is the right way to go at this point. We obviously, we have many residents who want a transfer station. The, Harvey's needs this contract in place in order for them to operate the transfer station, as Kristi just explained. So this gives both parties some time to work through the balance of the negotiation on the contract. But I would encourage the board not to be so inclined as to go too far with a lengthy extension, because there's been plenty of time.
Thank you.
That would be my view, and again, thank you to Kristi. So, I mean, if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
My question was around the August 5th date, but you answered my question by saying that. I think that's the appropriate date.
Now, a quick question. When we say this contract is required for them to operate in Westboro, does that just mean the facility up front, where folks are dropping off trash?
It's the entire, it's the entire operation.
The entire operation.
Right. So we have a local bylaw that requires that type of business to have a permit through the Board of Health. And the way that the contract is written, it acknowledges the contract as serving as that permit. So when we move forward, the board will execute the contract for the town's waste management program. The Board of Health will have to separately decide whether or not to permit the facility.
So, we'll kind of cleave that relationship that currently is held through the contract. It just makes more sense. But that's the way it was done previously and so that's the process and structure we're currently working under. But it's vitally important that that contract, I mean, like, if we didn't have that tonight, it would not be a good situation.
Then we better be meeting on Friday. Then we better be meeting on Friday.
Yeah, yeah. And I want to be, with all due respect to, you know, E.L. Harvey and the, and Waste Connections, which is now their parent company, that's, they've been, now they're in year three of that acquisition. The town has bent over backwards, quite frankly, to try to get us even to this point. So, I just want to be very clear to the public. I'm looking into the cameras someplace and just say that we have done everything we can to get us to this point. But every contract has to have another partner that's willing to do the work and get the contract done. And hopefully, we're at that place with this extension, but we've got a month and time is ticking.
Alan, did you have any comments? No, okay.
Just like to thank the town manager and the committee for the hard work in getting it to this point. It's hard to get parties in a contract to move fast when others aren't as motivated as we are. So, I'm comfortable with the extension to August 5th. I would have serious pause to any further extension though.
And I'll echo all the comments previously. So, thank you again. Let's, can I get a motion?
Can I, can I just amend your motion? There's only one signature line on the extension, so if you would just authorize me to sign it.
So, I would move to execute the extension, the contract for solid waste disposal with E.L. Harvey &amp; Sons, Inc. as presented and to allow the town manager to sign that on behalf of the Board and the town.
Second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call. Alan?
Edinburgh, yes.
Kio, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Marshall, yes.
And Welch, yes.
Great.
Thank you again. All right, moving on to item nine, senior citizen pay as you throw subsidized bag policy.
So, we had our last public information session on June 18th and one of the residents that was in attendance advised us that the Town of Grafton offers a subsidized pay as you throw bag program to qualifying senior citizens. So, this has come up in a couple of the information sessions, just about offering subsidized bags for seniors. And so, in looking at the program that the Town of Grafton offers and working with our Public Health Director and also our interim fine instructor, we wanted to quickly respond to that request and I think it's a good program. So, I really appreciate that they brought it forward as an example and then asked the Board to sign it. So, the way that it works is that, is that the seniors would have to apply, similar to any exemption that's received through the town. And any qualifying senior would receive four of the smaller pay as you throw bags per month for $1. So, just as a reminder, those bags cost a dollar each. And so, that's something that's worked for the Town of Grafton. Cela reached out to the Town of Grafton. They have 53 residents that participate in the program. They are a curbside program. So, their numbers might be a little bit, our numbers might be a little bit different, but we think this would work really well and wanted to bring it to you for your consideration.
Questions?
So, the application process, so, it looks like the rules for who would qualify are similar to other programs we have in Westboro.
Correct. Yes.
So, in theory, the town assessor is helping determine qualifications for those programs. Would it be, is it the senior center or the Board of Health would review that list and use that as the basis?
So, it's actually, the income qualification is tied to the median family income of Worcester County. The low, so, we specifically tied it to the low income limit for a single person household. And so, for the, so, once they completed the application, we would know, but for fiscal year 2024, that amount is 68,500. The way that that low income limit works is that it identifies number of people in the household and then the number changes. Our suggestion, our recommendation is that we just tie it to that single person. So, you might have a couple who, maybe for other programs, would actually have a higher threshold. We're saying, let's just, let's just make it simple so that we know the number and it'll just be for a single, it'll be tied to that single household.
Okay. So, the Board of Health would need to come to the town assessor to help them with this process or?
Yeah. So, there's certain documents that folks will have to provide, but yeah, they'll work with, directly with the town assessor. Yes, sorry.
And the town assessor has evaluated that, yes, they can, they should be able to handle. I mean, we don't want to sort of create an undue burden if these are different requirements than we usually have to follow.
It's slightly different, but it wouldn't create an undue burden because it would be, it's just that one number they would just need to demonstrate and they'll work directly with the town assessor to make sure that the documents we receive are representative of compliance or qualification.
If this is straightforward, then I believe you're right. Thank you.
Yes, so, I think this is great. I think that, and so, Christie, I appreciate you bringing this forward. I appreciate the resident who made us aware of this. I think this is an example. I mean, pay as you throw is a big change for all of us. We've talked about it a lot of times. We know the, kind of the buzz that's in the community. But I think this is iterative, iterative of the, our commitment to seeing how this rolls out and adjusting and educating and looking at the program as we go forward. We made certain commitments in terms of purchasing the bags. So, we're kind of down that road. That's not going to change. I think this is a good example of, we're going to learn and we can, you know, we have the opportunity to tweak. And I think this is the right thing to do in hindsight. Probably should have made that decision right out of the gate. We didn't, but now we're making it. So, no harm, no foul. And the only thing, Sean, I would just point out is, and for the public, the application will go through our Public Health Department. So, that's the body that they would be, like, where you'd actually go to file that. And then the behind the scenes work would be done in collaboration with our assessor.
Right, yeah, correct.
Oh, that's good here.
So, Public Health, they're going to field the applications and then the work will be done behind the scene and then, but the communication will come back out through the Public Health Department to the resident.
Thank you.
Yep. And it's a monthly, it's kind of a rolling application process and folks will be able to read that policy. So, you have to, as the policy says, applications will be due by the 15th of the month for approval in effect the following month. And so, if you miss it, just apply for the next month. But you don't have to keep applying, just to be clear.
You do have to apply annually.
Yes, apply annually, but not.
But not every month, right, yes.
That would be an undue burden.
Right, right.
But that means it basically seemed for the first month of our program now in July, we've missed that 15th of the month. So, this will only be effective August, effective now, but they won't be able to have it till August 1st.
Yeah, I mean, yes. We don't actually have bags to give out right now, so, because we had not intended to distribute them or sell them in town offices. So, we need to get the bags anyway, but I think that we can probably figure it out for the first month, yeah.
We do, just to be clear, sorry. We, there are bags. They're in the stores for sale. They're, that distribution, the locations is increasing. We just don't have bags here in town offices or the senior center.
Correct, yeah, to give out.
People say, no, that's okay.
I bought mine.
Okay.
All right, all right.
Alan?
I just want to clarify that the calculation of the very low income limit for a single person household will update every year as Todd updates that number.
Right.
Great.
Perfect. Well, I will just say, I'm very happy to have this program. I'll echo what Shelby said in regards to thank you to the resident who pointed this out to us. This, to me, is the type of creativity we need to help people be able to, in this case, throw away their trash. My questions are on the policy itself. Just a couple of observations and possible, I'll say clarifications. On, in the policy, on section one and two, it's a bit redundant. The last sentence of both of those two sections basically say the same thing. And I think that we should probably strike that language from the first, from item number one, as it makes more sense under item number two. So, I would propose that. The next item I had a question about was on item number five. It talks about the small bags and I'm just curious as to, is there a reason why we don't also include the discount on the large bags?
There's not a specific reason. We were just modeling the successful program in Grafton. I think what we've heard from the public engagement, or the public information sessions, as well as talking to DEP, I think we've heard from a lot of seniors that they think the small bag would work for their households. So, I would recommend that we just move forward with it as written and see if that becomes an issue.
Okay, I was just wondering why we couldn't just make a simple change to include the large bags. If the math stayed the same, it would be 50 cents a piece as opposed to $2 a piece.
Well, how many large bags would you give out? Because we're limiting it to four per month, which would be a bag, one bag a week.
Yeah, I think the idea.
Well, that's actually, that was actually our follow-up question, was I didn't see in here that there was actually, there was a mention of the limitation. I didn't, so the actual limit is the four per month?
Yes.
Yeah, so number five says that, yeah.
Okay, so, okay, I didn't read that as being, I thought it was just $1 for four small bags.
Yeah.
Not one, not, you're limited to four bags for $1.
We should probably clarify five, where it says approved applicants will be received a maximum of four bags once per month. Because the approved number, I mean, I realize that requires updating it, but the approved number is, I think, unclear. What's the approved number?
That's, that's what I'm getting. I didn't read it the way Christie's suggesting. I can see the thought, but not, that it's not written that way.
I think we just put the number parentheses, approved number parentheses four, and then it's clear.
And just stick with the small bags and not the large bags at discount. So, it'd be $1 for four bags. That's all you buy under this program per month.
And I think the idea, just in terms of the why for per month, is the guidance from DEP is that most households are going to use one trash bag per week for their trash, that that's under a pay as you throw type program. Because again, we're encouraging recycling, et cetera. So, that's kind of where the four, so you're getting, you know, those at a discount. And if you need more, then, you know, you would buy more.
Yeah, I would share with the Board. I had my bagels with the senior center this past week and the two and a half hours I was there, I would say two hours of what was spent on this discussion, on this topic, which was very interesting. You know, my feelings on this is, first of all, I don't, I think there should be a limit. I think four is a low number, especially to kick things off, only because people are going to be into a lot of adjusting to this program, to your point. They're going to be learning a lot of questions about, how do I, you know, one gentleman said to me, I'm going to go through a bag a day. And I was like, well, I tried to educate him on, well, okay, here's the types of things you should really be recycling or disposing of in different ways to limit your bag use. So, I'm just wondering if there's any opportunity here. I think four is a pretty small amount for a household of even two individuals.
So, DEP, in their experience, a family of four goes through one and a half a week.
One and a half a week. Okay. So, if they, if they go through their four, then they still go down to the store and they buy more bags at Roach Brothers or wherever they.
Yeah, I think we can, again, this is, as we've said all along, for this, I think, this is a start and if things aren't working, we'll adapt. But I think we're taking the, what we have as the recommendations from, from the experts that have done this before and see what happens.
I do, Patrick. I know certainly of situations with seniors where they need for, like, sanitary purposes to dispose of their trash from their household more frequently. So, they may not be using a full bag, but they're moving it like out of their house into like an exterior trash bag, right, for many reasons. And so, you know, I, look, this isn't a perfect process because, you know, I would say, if that was my loved one, I would say, don't use that red bag for this. You're going to use a regular trash bag and you're going to put it in that other bag.
I guess from my perspective, it really boils down to this and I certainly understand the end where you're coming from. But from my perspective, I believe that the seniors that qualify for this program should have access to as many bags as they need per month to fulfill whatever their needs. They could have a refrigerator that goes on the fritz and they need to clean out the fridge and now they got one bag. You know, they can't, we're not giving them the large bags under this program. So, to me, I mean, I think that the amount is quite small. I think it's going to come back to the Board again, you know.
What would you recommend?
I would say, make it eight, double that number. To the point that it was a bag and a half a week.
For a family of four.
For a family of four, right. But, so, I don't know what these households are like. I mean, there's a lot of households which have disabled people, et cetera, that, you know, make up the household, that might be more than two or three. And I just find that number is very small. And the other, the other point I would make is just on the program only being available to pick up the bags on the first week. Is there a reason why we wouldn't allow, I think I talked about that later on, is that bags will be distributed to Board of Health the first full week of the month during the regular business hours. Why couldn't somebody pick this, pick these up? Pick these up any week of the month? I don't understand why.
Yeah.
It's not part of the policy. It's the letter that went along with it from Jen. Is that the intention that we would only?
Yes.
And is there a reason why we wouldn't open up the whole month?
Again, we're modeling another program. I really, I think.
But I would imagine it's also because we're not keeping a stockpile of these things. So, I would imagine that we're going to have
Yes.
purchased what we're going to give out. And so, it's not like we're going to be buying them and having them held here at the town.
How about, I guess, so, I agree with you, Patrick. I think we start with that process because we don't know what the, you know, I think we don't know what they need will be under this program. So, I would say, let's go with the, it's once a week and then, and everyone knows like that's when they're going to go, right? So, I'm just going to put it on my calendar. I'm going to go and get those.
So, the idea is start off small, work to big.
If I may.
Sorry, go ahead, Alan.
Yeah, so, I think having the pickup during the first week helps everyone get on the monthly cycle for this. But also, as far as the number of bags, I guess, I'm not comfortable going from four to eight, given that, you know, a four-person household is going to average one and a half bags a week. I would think going from four to five is a nice option. There are four months that have five weeks. And if you went to five a month, that would give an extra 10 bags for the year. So, it's a bag a week, but over the course of the year, if you have one or, you know, if you have 10 weeks out of 52, that you have a little bit more and you need that second bag, you would have it.
I was going to recommend, going to, Alan, your mouth is faster than mine. I was going to recommend six and just leave it that small, but not the large ones and.
So, does that go to $1.50 then?
Yeah, it would be $1.50.
Those five would be $1.25. I'm sure that the dollars there just puts an easy.
Correct.
That makes more sense to me. For the math that Alan did, saying a bag per week, bag and a half per week, I think it's going to be a little more than that, especially in the initial startup here. But, okay. Do you, so, I would, I mean, unless you would like to make a motion, I would make that as a motion to approve this as amended.
So, you're amending that, item number one, striking the second sentence and leaving it at number two?
Yes.
And then adding clarification that approved applicants will receive an approved number, parentheses six, both in the prior sentence and that one?
Yep.
Those would be the only amendments.
And the number of bags?
Yeah.
Right, the approved number. Yep, okay.
Six.
I would second that.
Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, roll call vote. Alan?
I'm sorry, how much, how much are you charging?
$1.50, so it's 25 cents.
So, we'll need change in the office.
Yeah, right, I know.
That's going to be the problem.
Yeah.
Well, so, back to Patrick's point then, do we just go with eight, then it's $2?
I really think that you need to be, I think that you need to be conservative when you're setting the number of bags because we are following DEP guidance on what they've experienced across the state with people moving to pay as you throw. A lot of these households are one and two-person households and I think that one of the things that we hear is that our stickers are, or previously, were much too readily available. So, I think if, I think that we just need to be careful in terms of how readily available all of our bags are if they're not needed.
Christie, I would agree with you. I would just say that, I would just say that DEP, and Westboro's a unique community in that we have a transfer station. I think that 53 number is going to be higher because of the fact that we're not a exclusive curbside pickup community like Grafton.
But I think it would actually be lower.
I think it's going to be lower.
Because there are fewer people participating in Westboro in the waste management program.
Because pay-as-you-throw doesn't go through the curbside, right?
Right.
If you're curbside, you're not allowed to buy a thing.
Another consideration-
That's, that's my, that's my point.
Another consideration, another consideration, if we, if we go to eight, and we find out that most people aren't using eight, and we, let's say ninety percent of the people aren't using, you know, eight a month, or are using four, five, or six, and we then reduce it to a lower number, we're going to have people looking at this program and saying, we're taking something away of that.
Yep.
Now, if we start, I, I agree that four is tight, if we start at five or six, and there is a, there is a border need, we can always adjust it, or we can add the larger bags as well. But it's, I'm hesitant to overestimate and then have to reduce it and take something away.
I think it's a very fair point.
Yep.
Okay.
Kristi, what is, what is the, I just don't have it in front of me, what is the cost of the large bags when you buy them at the market, please?
It's ten dollars for the roll, so it's two dollars for a bag.
For five?
Because you have five in a roll.
Yep. Okay.
I, I, I should add that when we were originally looking at it, because, because it had been brought up, our, we actually found communities whose subsidized program, their prices matched the prices that we're selling them for to the whole community. So, that one and two dollar is actually a subsidized price in other communities for seniors.
So, we're already subsidizing with the price we have, now we're going to further subsidize for seniors?
Well, I mean, for qualifying seniors, I think that that makes sense.
Yep.
I'm just saying that in other, I mean, I think Patrick has brought this up several times, that the bag price for just the general public is higher in other communities. I'm not, I still think we should do this for these people who qualify.
Yeah, I mean, I, I know the motion's out there, I still, and we're not going to fight this, because we've been going on for too long.
Yeah, no, no, no.
I still think four and one dollar is the easiest, because now it's just going to be, I mean, I don't-
The change factor.
Yeah, just the change factor, that someone's going to come in and we're not going to have change, I don't know if the Board of Health has changed there, we'll have to try to figure out how they're going to pay somebody back, or, again, I don't, I don't know that there's a perfect number. I think one dollar is a good number.
Could we do, could we do five bags for a dollar? Um, you can. That way, that way, kind of-
I would support that.
Alan, you know, we're adding a bag, it's a little bit more than a bag a week.
Yeah, I'm okay with the increased number, and certainly that drives the cost down.
And then we're not dealing with change.
Yeah, I'm not worried about that, but other, other people evidently are, so I'm, you know, that-
Well, and it's-
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying right now-
People come in with, you know, I've got five, I mean, I just think it's a, you know-
I, I get it.
I know, it sounds like not a big deal, but-
But now we turn the Board of Health into a bank. Right now, they do not-
Right.
Well, they take money for other things, right?
Typically, it's a check.
It's a check.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I'm supportive of you want, if you want to amend your motion, I'm supportive of that.
I think you, I think you made the-
You made the motion?
I made the motion.
Oh.
I thought he made the motion.
He did.
And I seconded.
Yes.
I'll make the motion to, to amend that motion to twenty cents per bag for up to five bags.
With the other changes.
With the other changes.
Well, now, wait a second.
Can I just say five bags for a dollar?
It is five bags for a dollar, it's not twenty cents a bag, okay?
You pay a dollar.
Five bags for, yes.
Yes.
Yeah. So, you have to buy five bags?
Yes.
You can't buy two?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
And if you, that takes you more than a month to use them, then you don't need to get any next month.
That, fair enough.
Right. Yeah.
Thank you all for, uh-
Well, you know, I, you know, I-
I think it's important.
So, I'll second it, and in that, I'll just say, I know, you know, for folks that are watching, they're probably like, oh my God, like, they're talking about cents, but, you know, this is something, we, we've all heard, every member of this board who's sat in front of seniors, Christie's heard it, at a hundred-plus people attending the, I think it was the June fifth, um, session, this is really important to people, and dollars and cents matter, and I appreciate the, the board's thoughtfulness around this, and that we're having the discussion. And I, I think we're coming to a, a good compromise, and we'll see how it goes. If there's more demand, you know, there's maybe an opportunity for education and or an opportunity to look at the policy. So, I think it's a good change.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Alan?
Edinburgh, yes.
Kyo, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Marshall, yes.
And Welch, yes. Thank you very much. So, moving on to item twelve, designate waste management program-
Eleven.
Uh, no, amended job-
Eleven.
Eleven, job descriptions.
I need to get my vocals.
That's okay.
Yeah, sorry, item number eleven, amend job description and/or classification plan, public health nurse and waste management program coordinator.
Um, so, I'm going to take the waste management program coordinator, and then Kim will do the public health nurse, but essentially, all we're asking for under the waste management program coordinator is a position that you approved at your last meeting, but when we put it on the classification plan, we put it on as one position. We have since identified additional grant funding, and we've, we've heard that we will have additional applications, and so we want the ability to, to have two, which would cover, obviously, addition, would cover more hours.
So, I'll move the approval of the change to the, that's a job, the classification plan?
Yeah.
Classification plan for, sorry, I was looking down at it.
Waste management program.
Move to amend the classification plan by changing the number of waste management program coordinator, coordinator positions from one to two.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Alan?
Edinburgh, yes.
Kyo, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Marshall, yes.
And Welch, yes.
Yeah, thank you to those who are willing to step up for this-
Yeah.
-position.
Um, I also want to note that we did get an application for the warden position, so, excellent, the volunteer position.
Excellent.
Awesome.
Great. Okay. So, you have a marked up version. We currently have a health staff nurse job description that we're looking to amend and update to a public health nurse job description. A little bit of the history on this, several years ago, the senior center funded this position. It's been vacant for a number of years, so that, while the position hasn't been funded or budgeted, the job description still exists. So, we're looking to amend it, because we now have the opportunity to hire the individual who has been serving the town in this capacity through the Greater Burrows, Greater Burrows Grant, to come on board. That grant is ending the end of this month. The budget for FY twenty-five includes funding, eight hours is funded through the Board of Health, and eight hours is funded through the senior center's formula grant from the state. So, this position will continue to do much of the work that it has been doing for the past several years. As such, we wanted to update the job description, make it a little more current. One thing I will note, I apologize, there's something highlighted in yellow in the job description that actually should have been a strike through. It just relates to the insurance provisions. This person is actually covered under the town's insurance. So, that highlight should have been a strike through.
All my questions.
So, we are looking to have you approve the job description as presented as well. Our intention is to hire Jim Fredrickson into the position, so we are looking to waive the posting requirements that exist in the personnel policies.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
Can you remind me why the position, why the senior position, the way you said it, has remained unfilled for a couple of years?
It was when that individual left the position. It was about the timing that we, the grant, we were able to fill that need through the grant position.
Okay, so, so it wasn't like, it wasn't that services weren't being provided, just for clarity?
Correct.
They were just being provided through a different channel in the, this collaborative effort, which is now, which is ending?
Correct. Early on, we were waiting to see if this grant, the way the position has evolved, would continue to meet the needs, and if not, we would have tried to reinstate that.
Gotcha.
But it is, I think the services delivered are much appreciated and well-loved by the seniors.
Yeah, and needed, yeah, absolutely. So, it's up to sixteen hours, is the, what-
It is sixteen hours.
It is, okay. No, it just says per week, hours per week, eight dash sixteen, that's why I'm asking.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I think, so eight are funded, that's probably just the way it's written, wasn't, well, um, it's split between the Board of Health and the senior center from a funding standpoint.
Okay.
Um, just to be clear, the position will report to the health director.
Okay.
But this is in consultation with the senior center director. In terms of the needs and the clinics, and as things evolve and change, you know, this position is able to meet those needs.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments?
And, I, well, I guess just, yes, can I just ask, um, so, both our, uh, health director and senior center director have reviewed this, and they understand the changes. Great, correct.
Sean, did you have a question?
No, just going to thank you for these, for this thorough update, you know, I appreciate all that's gone into this. It, I think it looks great.
I appreciate the update as well. Alan, did you have any comments or questions? No? I just had one question on the language skills. I'm, I'm talking on a broken record here. Is there, I, I would love to see, and I think there's an appetite on this board to have multilingual as a language, as a desirable language skill. I'm not sure if it's necessary to call out specific languages, but I think on all of our job positions, this one is really important, I think, because I imagine this person's dealing with a very wide selection of our community. We should add multilingual into-
We actually include language in our job postings that speaks to things like language and representing the diversity of the community. My concern is if we're putting it in here, but it's not a requirement, I feel like the job ad actually calls it out more so than burying it in the job description.
Wouldn't that create a discrepancy, though? Like, if I'm applying for the job, I see that as highly desirable, right, not required, and then I'm like, looking at the job description, and it's not there to me?
It's not required. The fact that it's not required of the position is, is why, I guess I'm not understanding your question.
Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying. It's not required, it's desirable. I guess I'm just wondering-
That's why I think it goes in the job posting versus the job description.
All, so everything else here is absolutely required.
That's typically how we've-
Yep, yep, okay. I understand that difference, that makes sense.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question.
And while that would be nice, I think it would be difficult to-
I like to see continuity between, so, but I can understand Kim's logic.
It'd be difficult to have that isn't a requirement, and then find someone, I'd rather have it in the job description as highly desirable, and understand that that's an approach we want to take from a recruiting perspective, but, okay.
I'll move to amend the job description as presented, and to amend the classification plan, and further to move to waive the requirement that, that the position be publicly advertised for ten days prior to filling the vacancy.
Second?
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Alan?
Edinburgh, yes.
Kyo, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Marshall, yes.
And Welch, yes. Thank you, Kim, and Christie.
Now, it's twelve.
So, moving on to item twelve, designate waste management program coordinator position as special municipal employee.
So, Massachusetts general law, specifically, we refer to it as the conflict of interest law, prevents employees from holding two positions within town. In the case of the waste management coordinator, program coordinator, to enhance our ability to recruit and fill the position, we're looking to designate that position as a special municipal employee, which allows the individual holding that position to also hold another part-time position. So, we had identified some opportunities for recruitment that might be other part-time employees in town, and so by doing this, it allows us to hire someone who is holding another part-time position. We have, it's, it's the position, not the individual holding the position that is designated, and then, once, if you were to approve it, we just file with the town clerk that this role has been designated.
Any questions, comments?
I think that makes a lot of sense, I mean, especially where this is, right now, designated a temporary position.
Yes.
I, I just had a question to educate me. I'm supportive of this, it makes a lot of sense. If the person left the job and you had to hire somebody new, but they weren't qualified for the other half of the position, or the other, how would that, does that-
It doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter, okay, all right.
They're two separate hirings. It just allows them to have two, two positions.
Two or one, okay. Yep, makes sense. Any further comments? All right, look for motion.
So, I would move to amend the class of, nope, wrong one.
Move to designate the position of waste management coordinator as a special municipal employee in accordance with the conflict of interest law, Mass. General Law, Chapter two sixty-eight A.
Second.
Thanks, Sean.
Further discussion?
He caught me on the first one, so.
Seeing none, Alan?
Edinburgh, yes.
Kyo, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Marshall, yes.
And Welch, yes. It's like the second basement backing up the first.
Exactly. Thank you, Sean.
All right.
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Town managers' report. Floor is yours, Christie.
So, you have my report on your desk. The library director search, on Monday, June twenty-fourth, the board, the Library Board of Trustees appointed Kate Caraccio, who's currently the library director in the town of Wilmington, to be Westboro's new library director, subject to reference check. Maureen's last day is Friday, July fifth. Related to the golf club building, the municipal building committee awarded BFE Architects the feasibility project for the golf club building. The price proposed is sixty-five thousand two hundred dollars, which is less than what was appropriated at a town meeting. I take your thunder there, sorry. For youth and family services, we are working with Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services to facilitate the transition of counseling services to them effective July first. So, Kim and I did have a call with them, just to make sure they're ready, but they're already being introduced, so thanks to Julia for helping make those connections. We also want to thank Eileen Ri- Reisch for her nineteen years of service to Westboro, and Bethita Schuman for coming back to support the department over the last sixteen months. The select board summer schedule will hold regular meetings on July twenty-third and August, August twentieth. We're also working to schedule that additional meeting with the planning board, so I did send out, asking if you're available on July seventeenth. So, we will figure that out and get that posted. In the finance department, the tax bills will be going out prior to July first into August first. Fiscal twenty-five exemption applications will be mailed after July first to those past recipients and others who have inquired in the assessor's office. In the information technology, the town was awarded a community compact municipal fiber grant in the amount of nineteen thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. So, the grant will cover ninety-five percent of the cost to install fiber from the town hall to the new community center. That will be used to expand the town's network, which will provide necessary IT resources for the new building. Five percent local match is required, so one thousand fifty dollars, which is within our budget. Um, in the library, in June, they started a spice club for the months of June, July, and August. They'll have different spices for patrons to take home and try out. Will include recipes. They can also check out a cookbook or get inspiration from their newest database, A to Z World Food, A to Z Food America, and Connectwell. They're asking participants to share pictures of what they are making by tagging their social media accounts. So, spice kits are available the second Monday of the month until supplies run out. And they also kicked off their summer reading program. So, if you read it, you can win prizes. So, a full calendar of events is posted on their website, and then there will be a farewell reception for library director Maureen Amiot from four thirty to six on Wednesday, June twenty-sixth, and the public is invited.
That's tomorrow.
Yep. Yep. The recreation department, they've employed over ninety seasonal staff members to work at various programs throughout the summer. They officially started on Monday, June twenty-fourth. All programs can be found on the website. And in the senior center, after the Fourth of July holiday, they're going to start their late Tuesday evening, so that begins on July ninth. They'll be closing at one PM after serving lunch on Fridays, beginning June twelfth, so they go late on Tuesdays in the summer, and then they close a little early on Fridays. They'll return to their regular schedule on September third. The Sunshine Memory Cafe and Saturday Sunshine Respite Program will continue through the summer. These both have become very important program for local caregivers. The caregiver support, support group will also continue to meet twice a month in July and August. And then during the, the heat last week, the senior center was open- Uh, the caregiver support, support group will also continue to meet twice a month in July and August, um, and then during the, the heat last week, the senior center was open for extended hours to provide cold space. That's it.
Thank you, Christie.
Yep.
Uh, issues and correspondence of the board, anyone like to go first?
Since, uh, Christie stole my thunder, I have nothing to report.
Sorry, 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 sorry.
She can have all the good news, huh?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Sean.
Um, sure, the, um, library building committee has met a couple of times, and, um, the, one of the things we're focused on is, um, the means of egress from the building in terms of, uh, supporting um, those, um, who need better access within the library, and, uh, currently talking through, right now, it appears the Mass Disability Board, and that's not the name of it, is requiring perhaps two means of egress per level that meets the street, or, you know, is an exit, so potentially four means of egress, so we're looking at that, and, uh, putting together proposals, and that's, um, one of the primary focuses over the next month, so we can come forward with that, um, and make sure we have something figured out by the end, hopefully the end of the summer as we work through this process. So, um, I mention it, cause it's kind of a big deal, but it is actively being looked at by the architects and the project managers, along with the board. Um, and I also just wanna say thank you to Maureen Amiot, um, I look forward to seeing her tomorrow afternoon at her farewell reception, and as a Westboro resident, she has agreed to stay on the committee even after she's gone, she just, you know, can't get enough of our Westboro library. So, um, looking forward to that, and seeing her.
Lot of knowledge there.
Yes, so, that is what I have to report to.
Alan?
Yeah, just one thing, a reminder that school's out, we're sort of into the part of summer, there are a lot of young people out and about, so as people are driving around town, please keep an eye on the crosswalks, or folks walking, for kids bicycling, as well as using those electric scooters that are all the rage, so, um, just be careful out there, please.
Thank you, Alan.
Yeah, uh, thank you, I've, uh, two items, one, I'll tail off of what Alan just said, um, regarding, um, biking, um, I have to say that, um, and I know parents aren't gonna like me for this one, but kids are not supposed to be biking on sidewalks, I know the Rotary is not a fun place, and the downtown can be congested, but riding bikes on the sidewalks is dangerous for pedestrians, and, um, we certainly cannot have electric bikes on sidewalks, and I'm seeing it more and more, um, I have, on this note, I have asked the Active Transportation and Safety Committee to take a look at this, perhaps, potentially to come up with some sort of education or what have you, and on that note, I would just ask, um, parents to get their kids a helmet, I'm seeing a lot of kids without helmets on their bikes, um, thankfully, the adults are wearing them, but, um, not helmets on the bikes, helmets on their heads, excuse me, um, but, um, it's a small investment, uh, to, uh, truly save a life, and I've, I've seen what happens when that doesn't happen, so I would encourage folks to, uh, take notice, but do not ride your bikes on the sidewalks, I can't say it enough. On a lighter note, uh, the farmer's market is underway, as we heard already, it's every Thursday from two to six PM, uh, volunteers are always needed and welcomed, and if you're interested in volunteering for a couple hours, you can go to westbororotary.org, and click on the button right on that page that says click to volunteer, and, um, get out there and support, and again, thank you to, um, Maureen, and is someone gonna speak to the block party, coming up?
I was just gonna say, I'm surprised nobody else said that, so.
You got it, you got it.
All right, so, I just have a couple of things, first of all, to go off of that, um, the block party, uh, Fourth of July Block Party is June twenty-eighth at five PM at Bay State Common, uh, lots of food, music, and fun, so hope to see everybody out there. Quick de- update from Sustainable Westboro, um, we're looking for volunteers for the EV Car Show, uh, if you're interested, please reach out to Jeff Levine, at jeffleveine123@gmail.com. The Sustainable Westboro Committee is still working with, on the ZEV policy, the Zero Emissions Vehicle Policy for the town, and, uh, working with the various different, uh, department heads and Christie's team to, uh, to make sure that we have a good, solid policy. The climate leaders' application, um, Cohort One by D O E R was targeted for August of this year, we weren't, uh, Sustainable Westboro really wasn't targeting that, but the communities that were pushed back on D O E R, and they have now moved the Cohort One application to December, so Sustainable Westboro may look to try to, uh, apply, uh, for, uh, the climate leaders' app, um, application at that point, so, uh, a lot of work to be done, but, uh, we're getting close. Council on Aging, again, uh, I met with, uh, folks down on, uh, Pickles with the Board on Tuesday, uh, lots of great conversations, very spirited discussions in regards to not only trash, but, uh, a couple of other different topics, but they are looking for, uh, a volunteer to be a secretary on the Council on Aging, so, uh, please reach out to, um, that department if, if you're of interest, uh, um, in doing so, uh, and then, uh, finally, I'll just say, being the rookie on the trustees of more soldiers memorial, uh, I certainly appreciated the, the conversation earlier tonight, but I also just wanna thank them for all the work that they did in preparation for, uh, the Memorial Day celebration, uh, a few weeks back, um, there's a lot of work on cleaning the different memorials, and preparing for that, um, that they did, so, thank you very much for that, and with that said, I'll look for-
Did you see the block party?
I did see the block, it was the first thing I-
Sorry, sorry, okay, I'll be in the dunk tank at six thirty.
Oy.
So, come with your, come with your money and help the Lions.
You're gonna convince me to jump in.
Well, you're all welcome.
You don't wanna see me in a bathing suit.
I'd be one of those things, or-
I didn't say, I-
The whole thing fell apart.
I didn't wanna see, I wanted to see you in a bathing suit, I'm just saying, come down, and, you know, spend some money.
I know, but you'll, I'll get roped in. Anyways, uh, all right, I'm looking for a motion to go in executive session.
Was it on through all of them?
I think one of them I crossed off.
Okay. Sorry, just a minute here. So, I move-
I, forgot one thing, I'm so sorry, before we go into executive session-
I'm stopping my movement.
Thank you. Um, I would like the board to join me in a very quick one line of happy birthday to one of our board members.
Please do not.
So, on the, on the count of three, we're gonna all wish-
I vote no.
Mr. Kyo, happy birthday, one, two, three.
Happy birthday, Sean.
Happy birthday, too.
I thought about not coming.
Anyway, thank you for coming and joining us, um, and you can-
You only turn twenty-nine once.
That was a long time.
Okay, now you can move.
My movement, I move to enter into an executive session under Mass. General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with all unions, if the chair determines that an open meeting would have detrimental impact on the board's position. Under Mass. General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, Ari Ferris Development Group LLC versus Town of Westboro, Lax Media LLC and Lax Media Math LLC, versus Superior Court, CA Number two-two-eight-five-CV-zero-one-two-eight-one, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. And under Mass. General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, Ari Town of Westboro versus Westboro SPE LLC, Boston Suffolk County Land Corps case, land court case number nineteen TL-zero-zero-zero-seven-six-eight, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position, and under Mass. General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, Ari Westboro SPE LLC versus Town of Westboro et al., US District Court, CA Number four, colon, twenty-three, CV-one-two-zero-one-seven-dash-MRG, if the chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. And under Mass. General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation regarding Westboro SPE LLC, US Bankruptcy Court, case number twenty-three-dash-four-zero-seven-zero-nine, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. And under Mass. General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, arriving, arising from the foreverse municipal building project, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body and the chair so, public body and the chair so declares. And under Mass. General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A six, to consider the purchase exchange lease or value of real property at two thirty-one Turnpike Road, if the chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the board's negotiating position. And under Mass. General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A seven, to act under the authority of the Select Board to approve executive session minutes of June eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
And I declare that an open meeting, open session would have a detrimental effect on the board's litigating, negotiating, and bargaining positions, and the board will not be recommending an open session at the conclusion of the executive session, can I get a second?
Second?
Roll call vote, Alan?
Edinburgh, yes.
Kyo, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Marshall, yes.
And Welch, yes, thank you, everyone, thank you, Westboro TV, and have a great night.